Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Glasgow City Council meeting. This is Monday night. Please stand and ask your place. Pledge your allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, and without indivisible liberty and justice for all. If you remain standing, please. Before I ask Councilman Bidel to say a prayer, I just want to make one comment. And how many times have we stood in this chamber here swearing in police officers and see how many families come and show up to be part of seeing somebody become a Glasgow police officer? It's always a family, family occasion. And tonight, we kind of have the sad version of that. One of Glasgow's police officers, Sergeant Cameron Merle, lost his wife in an automobile accident on Saturday afternoon. And then he was transferred to Louisville and has a number of injuries to deal with. So before Councilman Bidel gives our indication, let's remember a part of our family and their family and ask blessings on Terry.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, as your children recome before you tonight, Father, lifting up blessings that we know we have from you, Father, that you've watched over us today, you've guarded us, you've been so much, you've been our lives, Father. We recognize your power and your presence and your promises in our lives, Father. And tonight, Father, as the mayor just mentioned, we do lift up Sergeant Cameron Merle. We pray for his recovery from the injuries. We pray that you will strengthen his family in the loss of his wife, Tracy. Console that family, Father, give them your grace, show mercy upon them, Father. Help us to join in and being a part of the grieving, the suffering that's going on right now, Father, help us to have solidarity with this, Father, that we can be a blessing to them, Father. Again, we lift them up to you as all of our city staff. We lift up, we know the police department is grieving and there for Sergeant Merle, and you continue to help them as they help him and give them comfort, Father. Fathers of the country, we pray for one another. Father, we're thankful for the freedoms you give to us, for democracy. We pray, God, that you'll help us to be responsible in our decisions, our thought process, the way we communicate, the way we carry on, what you allow us to do, Father. Above all things, Father, we want to give you the glory. Father, we're thankful for this time to serve. We pray as a body and as the mayor and the staff. We want to serve the citizens of Glasgow. We're thankful for our rich heritage that you've given this community, so many opportunities for us, Father, and we are grateful for them. To Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Have you seated. I'll ask Clerk Mona Simmons to call the roll.
Bidel.
Present.
Go.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Marion.
Here.
Neil.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trig.
Here.
Witcher.
Here.
All right. Thank you all for being here. And going back to Thursday, you would have gotten in your package for the council a proposed agenda that we can go by for tonight's business. I would entertain a motion that we approve that agenda so we can proceed.
Motion.
By Councilman Marion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Neil, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. So let's move to that agenda where the first item of business is to approve the minutes that were taken from the meeting we had back on April the eighth.
Motion, Bidel.
Okay. Councilman Bidel makes the motion. Is there a second on those minutes?
Second.
Second from Monica Kirkpatrick. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes now go into the record from the meeting on April the eighth. Let's move into our items of business for tonight, and we are continuing with our annual presentations from the various departments. This is a happening department that's going to report tonight some early things. Listen very carefully for a lot of the things that our planning and zoning department has. And Kevin Myatt is here. He's got a good presentation to tell us about. Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for letting me be here tonight. The sheet that you have in front of you is just a snapshot of what's been going on in the past five years in this area. And I use the word area simply because we're all connected, you know, the county and the city, both Cape City and Park City are all connected with us as well, and we grow as one. You'll see the region, and we can, that will be not on this sheet, but that's just something that's going on in our region. We're all aware of what's transpiring up and down I-65, and it's going to have a play on us. And you can see by this data here, the plat review data from 2019 to 2023, and you can see very clearly, some of the numbers are going up considerably. If you look down at the bottom for development review on this sheet, you will notice that major subdivisions have gone up. And in our office, we classify a major subdivision as six tracks or more. So six parent tracks, doesn't have to involve a new street, but, or a new road, but that is your defining mechanism for a major subdivision. So you'll see there, we've almost doubled since last year in our major subdivisions. You'll see the lots are considerable there, and this takes into effect the entire area, includes Cape City and Park City and Barron County as a whole. The number, though, that's kind of important to look at is that bottom number where it talks about number of applications reviewed, and that includes all things, zone change applications, variances, developments that's not labeled on here, because those lots might not be subdivided out, they just need developed. And the reason why I don't include developments and zone changes is because typically, those numbers, variances in specific, they don't, they may not happen this year. They may have gotten approval from the planning commission to get started, and they may not have broke ground for various reasons, whether that's, you know, waiting on infrastructure, waiting on materials, or labor, whatever it may be. So it may be next year before they begin. So we don't really count those numbers in until they finally start breaking ground. And even at that time, there's a possibility that they may not, you know, make it. They may, they may get started and not have the resources to finish it. So that's why we talk about number of applications reviewed. That includes all numbers. So you'll see how they've gone up considerably since 2019. And you'll notice in 2020, which is the COVID year, the numbers spiked, and that's a direct result of the stimulus money that was sent out and all of that that was involved in that. We're all aware of those things, and it's still continuing to be trickled down. One of the things that I want to stand here in front of you and say, though, is this, growth, and I said it last year to you all and to official court and to other members, growth is going to come. It's going to happen. There's no way around it. And we're going to have to be prepared and be proactive rather than reactive. And some of those things that we've been looking at as a planning commission is how can we make that process more streamlined? And, you know, I know that Jim is not a city employee, Jim Griffin, who's the head building official, building inspector, but they've received their license to be able to inspect, you know, state jurisdiction jobs, so they have that jurisdiction now. So those state jobs where it may take four to six months to get a review done, it's going to be reviewed in about a month, you know. It'll be a much more streamlined process. Everything's done in-house, done here, so nothing's sent up to the state any longer. Now, plumbing and HVAC is still a state-only thing, and that will always be sent to the state for them to review. But to give you some context there, those individuals who inspect that, they have 13 counties, including this county, to inspect your state HVAC and state plumbing. So they may be here once a week. So that we can't change. Your state building inspector, once again, he has one, we are one of 13 to 14 counties. So we've eliminated that, so we are only one county. You come in here, you get this, we're one city. It's done that day. You get your applications in, it starts the review process right then. So some of those things, we've started streamlining. Some things we've made some changes to as regards to your subdivisions. If it doesn't involve a new street, the planning commission has decided that we, as the staff, can review those and review those up to 19 lots. And once you hit 20 lots or more, or you involve a new street, you have to get that approved through the planning commission. We don't have the availability or the jurisdiction to do that. So that will also pursue several plats. They don't have to wait three weeks to a month to get those approved by the planning commission. Now, the same oversight's still required by our utility companies to sign those major subdivision plats. That's still a requirement, no prerequisite, still set on there, okay? So we will still require those when you get those recorded in the clerk's office. But to kind of give you an idea on these numbers here, you can see minor, major subdivisions, the plats and the lots. You talk about 2023, you're talking about 249 minor subdivision plats that we saw, just the minor subdivision plats, with 353 lots. And what that should tell you is that individuals are subdividing property, growth is happening, whether it's residential or commercial growth. And I don't include industrial growth so much in that, in the sense that we have a lot of industrial ground available. So your industrial ground's typically your largest ground, it's your largest acreage zoning that we have in our city limits. And typically, those don't get broke up into small pieces like you might see a minor subdivision for residential purposes. But that should tell you that you have an influx of people that are moving into this area, that are making up your workforce, that are making up your school numbers and some of that things. We're working on our comprehensive plan. One of the numbers that's come across, it's very eye-opening for us, is since 2000, the Hispanic population has grown 461%. It has actually taken over the largest minority in Barron County in Glasgow. And that's census numbers that we pulled from the US Census. So you can see those numbers are coming in, those things are starting to take place. We're, we have an influx of people coming in from various states into our city limits, into our county, and they're making up, you know, a change that's taking place within our community. We're growing, there's no doubt about that, and we're not going to stop growing. So population numbers are going to go up. When you see industrial development, the size is taking place just north of us, and maybe just to the west of us. That impacts us. It impacts us from a residential standpoint. And I've had discussions with other individuals, you know, people want to talk about, you know, if we get industry, we'll get people to come. If we get people in lots of homes, we'll get industry to come. There's no chicken or egg there. They're both chickens, or they're both eggs. One's going to get the other. So if you have an influx of people to come into your community, you will have commercial and industrial development to follow. You may not have the industrial development that you're seeing in, you know, the cities that's just to the north of us where they're hiring 5,000 people, but you're going to see the 100, 150-person industries come in. And that, the largest sector, the largest employment sector in our entire nation is small business, okay? It isn't those major factories that hire 5,000 people. The backbone is your, is your small business. And when you get those industries to come in at 50 and 100 people at a time, you get a more sense of close-knit community. Those individuals, you know, take part more likely in your community, they live in your community, and those are the ones that we, we, as the planning commission, see happening and see growth in that, in that development. Now, to give you an idea of the planning commission, the planning commission was formed in 1972. We didn't have subdivision regs until 1978. However, this coming December will be 75 years that Glasgow has had its zoning ordinance. So the first zoning ordinance was in December of 1949. So it was way ahead of its time. So, you know, individuals come in and they may say, hey, when did this zoning, I don't, I've never even heard of it. You know, it's 75 years old, so a little hard to dispute that now, you know. So not everybody knows that there's a zoning ordinance there, and it does dictate, you know, land usage to a degree, but there are avenues for an individual to seek out variances and conditional uses to that. So the planning commission is your legislative arm. It holds your public hearings, it makes recommendations to you all for final actions, just the same as it does to Cape City and Park City and Barron County Fiscal Court. That is the purpose of it. You know, our purpose is to tell you about growth trends, where we see issues that are transpiring, how we can, how can we help with those, how can we make it, you know, convenient for developers, homeowners, citizens, without just completely losing the soul of your community, you know? So these numbers here are available to you. Our comprehensive plan's getting renewed this year, so we're going to start having public meetings here for you all to review your future land use maps. Those are the maps that dictate where your future growth is going to occur. And we, we, as the staff, don't just pick here and there. We see the trends, we see where people are building, we see where utilities are already in existence, where, you know, we have existing utility networks. That's where your developers want to locate at. They don't want to pay, you know, 50 grand to bring a sewer line just to get to them. They want to have it there. So we see a lot of that development, and that's where the future land use maps are important for you to come, to look at, to see where the growth is, to have conversations on, gives you an idea of where your city's headed, honestly. So with that being said, that was a kind of a quick data-filled speech. So does anybody have any questions or thoughts or anything?
Kevin, I had just a couple of questions here. The first one relating to our zoning laws that we have, are we antiquated with some of those? And then, what do we need to be as a legislator by looking out into the future?
Okay. So our zoning regs, we've updated those in the past two years. One of the things we've increased, or created, I'm sorry, is a mixed-use overlay district, which allows you to have mixed uses in the same building, a commercial residential use in the same building. And it's just an overlay that you can apply to your property. Now, it does require you to have at least an acre in size to do that, because those typical projects are, they're fairly large, you know, they're three or five acre stuff, you know. There are some things that have been approved by the state even this year that we are going to have to discuss, it's going to be regulated. This medicinal cannabis, it's going to be, it's going to be a big thing. And we, obviously us, along with a lot of other municipalities and a lot of other legislative bodies, we're just now seeing it. You know, the states approve some things, and they're only giving us six months before it goes into effect on January 1, to get some regulations in, if that's what you, as a community and as a group, so desire. So if we don't have those regs already wrote, they're going to be in place. And there's no, once the cat's out of the bag, they're going to put it back in. There's no, you know, retroactively stopping something. So, you know, that's, that's a decision that this, this body will have to make, whether you're going to opt in or opt out. So that will, could fundamentally change a lot of things that we've got in this area. It truly will, because it affects every single county and city in Kentucky. Every single one of them will have to make a decision.
Then my final question on that, from us, again, as a legislative body, are we providing enough resources to the joint city-county planning commission so that your work can be carried on, and we are out there doing enough strategic planning for you and others on your staff?
Yeah, certainly. You know, we have a lot that the last five years has kind of pushed us to, every day is a very, very, very busy day. A lot of things are going on, and that is a good thing, and sometimes it's a tough thing, because there's, not everything's just approved. There are some hard decisions and conversations that have to be made that tells a person, well, you can't do it in this manner, but we can do it this way. And that might not be exactly what they want to hear, but it's not telling them, no, you don't only have one option, you have several options. And we try to provide that. And we have a great network of planners across the state that also helps us, that we can lean on, will ask questions, hey, what's transpiring in your area that we're not seeing? You know, these short-term rentals, that was a big thing in the past couple of years, right? We've got rules and regs in place that kind of regulate that to a degree, while it doesn't suffocate it or it doesn't keep it from happening. It helps those local neighborhoods to remain as their close-knit, you know, neighborhood that they want to have. So that's a product of some of the regulations that we've come up with. But yes, as a staff, we're doing very well, you know, we're there every day, and you guys are a tremendous help, because I know I can call on you all, and you all would be there if we needed to have a public meeting. I'd let you all know, and you all would show up and provide input. Even if it's criticism, that's better than just not knowing or not coming. That at least gives us an idea of what we need to be doing. So, so thank you all for that.
Would you make some general comments about annexation, please?
Okay. So the annexation has changed a little bit, and I know that Rich has been on top of that with regards to how the state has talked about annexation. And just to be honest with you, it came down from those counties that have occupational tax in their county. That's where the big division comes, you know, the city annexes it, then the county loses that money, that tax money, and that's because our county doesn't have a occupational tax or any kind of licensing or division. We don't have that same potential headbutting. So annexation-wise, it is important for the city to realize where growth is going to occur. And you have to also remember, and I'll speak on behalf of the chief here, you know, the more property you annex, the more issues that can happen with your ISO rating. And you will eventually have to have, you know, a third station. It's inevitable. With the amount of population growth that you are going to have and you're going to see, you know, that third station's going to be very important and very vital for you all. And it's vital to keep that ISO rating so low, which is also a very attractive thing to large developers and those industrial units. Because, you know, you go from an ISO rating from a nine to a one or a two, I mean, that's on a building that's $15 million, that's in the six figures on your insurance that changes for you. You may not see a huge amount in your residential aspect, but your commercial and industrial, it's a massive thing. But annexation process that we have been meeting on and had, you know, those meetings, we try to review the portions that want to be annexed in, those that are consented, but also at the same time, look at where we have infrastructure in place, so that we make a informative decision with you all as the council members, with the department heads, that we're not just annexing property just because it's available with no utilities to it. We have to put some due diligence in and some research in to find the best aspects and the best areas for those, those places to be annexed in. We have a responsibility, I believe, as a city to provide that to your existing citizens, because you, you know, you move further out, that ISO, ISO rating affects your existing citizens, you know, as well, not just the people that are coming in. So you have some things you have to think about in regards to that. It's always good to grow, as long as it is, is growth that's done with, with some understanding, with information and facts, and not just as the wild, wild west.
Any other questions for Kevin? Kevin, that's an amazing operation they have up there. It's, I think, first of all, Kevin watered down quite a bit what his involvement's going to have to be when it comes to medicinal cannabis, because the state is really looking at planning and zoning people to figure out where a dispensary for medical marijuana can be. And Kevin's got to figure out how many feet from a school, how many feet from a daycare, and what sections of the community that would be able to be licensed for that. There's a, there's a lot on your plate just from that point right there, Kevin.
Yeah, yeah, we do, we, there's a pretty informal video that's available that the state has put out to, to its legislative bodies. It's not available to the public yet, but they want you to understand what's transpiring, those regs, and I can, I can email you out that video so that you can see, that you can have an understanding of what is transpiring and what's coming. They're going to have a, a meeting, an official Zoom meeting on June the 24th for the public. And then all of their state regs have to be in by July 1, and then January 1 is when it gets officially adopted and, or it's already adopted, but officially implemented. So there's going to be a lot of, a lot of talk, a lot of decisions to be made with regards to that.
Could you send us that, you know, please?
Certainly. I have a team.
Busy office up there, for sure.
Yep.
A lot of interest in a lot of different things.
All right.
And appreciate y'all doing a good job every day.
Thank you all.
All right. Good report. Let me move forward now. We have no old business, but we have some new business that we need to get up before the council. Rich, you want to talk about this resolution?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution declaring certain city property surplus pursuant to law and authorizing its disposition. Whereas the Glasgow Public Works Department possesses certain personal property, which is more particularly described as approximately 26 tons of cut stone, which was removed from the city's retaining wall on North Ray Street, whereas the personal property is not needed by the department, and the department has determined that it should be surplus. And whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interest for the personal property to be declared surplus and its disposition authorized according to law. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, it's resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section 1, pursuant to KRS 82.03, 083, sub-paragraph 3, the following written determinations are made. A, the property to be surplus is the personal property more particularly described as approximately 26.13 tons of cut stones, which were removed from the retaining wall on North Ray Street. B, the intended use of this personal property at the time of its acquisition was for the construction of a retaining wall along North Ray Street. C, the reason why it is in the public interest to dispose of this personal property is due to the age of the personal property and that the cut stones are not needed for any city operation going forward. Section 2, the method of disposition shall be, to be used, shall either be by public auction or by any other means permitted by KRS Chapter 82. The property described, again, is approximately 26.13 tons of cut stones, which were removed from the retaining wall on North Ray Street, and they are hereby declared surplus. Section 3, this property shall be disposed of by public auction or by any other means authorized by law. Section 4, Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to take any action necessary in order to carry out the actions contemplated herein.
All right. You have, well, first of all, you've heard this particular resolution. We need to consider passing it on first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, all right. What about discussion? I'll just say this, from the, from the city hall standpoint, we have a lot of inquiries about this property, about these rocks. Some people are interested in buying them, some people just want to know what we're going to do with them, some people have different opinions on what ought to happen to it. But the actual procedure is, is that we have to do first things, we have to declare it as surplus property. And then, when we make it surplus, we can move forward, as Rich says, it could be an auction or maybe some other sort of way of putting it out there, but this is the first step in this process. So I have a motion and a second. If there's any further discussion, if not, I'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the resolution passes. We got one more, I think, Rich. I'm sorry, we don't have one more. This was the, actually, we don't have to vote on this. There's some municipal orders for some additions to particular boards and committees, and those were mailed to you in your packet. Be sure and look over them, because it takes two readings. This will be the first reading, and the second one, we will vote on when we have our next council meeting. Fair enough? All right. Next thing we need to do is to talk about a few things that are coming up. We have Entertained Glasgow presenting Sunday Best. It's going to be at Beaver Trail Park. The gates open at 5:00 on Friday night with the, with the beginning at 7:00, the music. Hey, April, do you want to come up here? I knew you, I probably didn't give you any heads up. That's okay, though, because April is, April is the chairman of the committee and has been since the beginning of Entertained Glasgow. and has been since the beginning of Entertained Glasgow. And I just, I think that the council needs to know the response you've gotten and the wonderful entertainment that is gonna be coming.
Yeah, people are really excited about this one. It's Sunday Best is the main act, and then Dad Vod's is opening for Sunday Best. So I think that'll be fun. You can come out to the park at, the food trucks will start at 5. Bring your lawn chairs and a blanket, come out, see our new shelter. We're gonna be able to utilize it this time. And the music will start at 7. And I think it'll be a really neat night. Bring your kids out, let them play on the playground, and just have a good family evening.
Okay, good. One of the, if you, if you read about, read all of the different things that happen with different cities in the state, one of the big pushes is to improve quality of life for the citizens. And when you look at what happened this past weekend with Sip Shop and Stroll, when you look at what's coming up with the Entertained Glasgow, when you look at the Plaza Theater down here, or the people that come to that, and all the other things that fall under the category of quality of life, I think the diversity that we have going along with such things as Entertained Glasgow is very, very impressive. So I'm encouraging everybody to get out there. And a lot of, even the city attorney has heard of Sunday Best. So he's pumped up, he's pumped up about him being here.
Through my chilts.
Through your chilts. It's good to stay in communication with your kids, for sure. All right, we've got on the, on the 27th, which is Saturday at 4 o'clock, All About Dance, Dancing Through the Dark recital for 2024 is gonna be over at the Plaza. That's a wonderful group of youngsters and a wonderful venue with which for them to have that. So be sure and remember that. This is gonna be exciting on May the 10th. Be thinking about this. We got a few days, but it is the 225th Birthday Bash of the City of Glasgow. And April really wants to come up and talk about that one.
I do. I want everybody excited about it.
Okay, say the word. Is this a what?
Yeah, we're gonna do it May the 10th.
Okay.
And we're gonna have food trucks, we're gonna have inflatables, we're gonna have Seven Nations coming. I believe that they played at the Highland Games several years.
13 years.
That's correct. So we're gonna have a really fun day. All of your departments will be out along the square for you guys to visit with. So it's just a celebration of the city, 225 years, just a big birthday party, and I want everybody to show up and enjoy it.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of our city departments are kind of coming up with their own little spin on what 225 years.
Yes, we hope to get lots of participation.
Yes, that's right. So mark that down, May the 10th. We'll look forward to seeing you here. And of course, Seven Nations is tremendous. Then on the 11th, we can go down to the Plaza and enjoy the music of Seven Bridges, the ultimate Eagles experience. And that'll be a good sing-along down there for sure. And let's see, that's the only announcements that I think that I have, unless there's something that I'm forgetting. And Chastity I know's got something.
Um, I just wanted to take a moment to extend our appreciation to one of the Plaza volunteers. About a week ago, a longstanding volunteer, Ms. Bonny Copas, passed away. And she had been volunteering at the Plaza for decades, I think, since it originally opened back up. So I just wanted to thank her family on behalf of everyone at the Plaza for, for all the joy she brought to so many people as a volunteer there.
I appreciate you bringing that up. And you know, that's one of the, one of the remarkable things about the Plaza is that the Plaza has been blessed by having volunteers. It doesn't matter how hard it is, how much work it is. There's a bevy of volunteers, yourself included, who show up to do whatever the task is. And the revitalization of the Plaza would never have happened without volunteers who wanted to make sure that it happened. And Bonnie was one of those who was there no matter what. I appreciate you bringing that up, Chastity. All right. Anything else? I will entertain a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you all for being here, and I appreciate all of your efforts, and appreciate all the good work that's going on here in the city. Thank you.